Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Escambe County Tourist Development Council. Today is September 9th at 3:03 PM. Philip, was the meeting properly noticed?
Mr. Chairman, this meeting was noticed in the Pensacola News Journal on September 4th in the board's weekly meeting schedule.
Would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. On the roll, Matish Patel, James Reeves, Ashley Hoffberger, Shirley Cronley, David Baer, Brad Mullenex, Charles Baer, Jennifer Brer, and Jason Nicholson.
Great, we do have a quorum. Thank you, appreciate it. So this meeting is officially called to order and I welcome everyone for being here today. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak? We have this opportunity before we get into business. Seeing no one rush the podium, we'll move on. So we do have one item on the agenda and that is Foiling Events U.S. For Foiling Week, we have a couple of speakers. Luca Rizzati, did I spell it right? And Scott Over.
Thank you, David, and thank you everyone from the council for being here.
Welcome.
If possible, we would like to show a quick video of the event that was done. It's two minutes long.
The time is yours.
Thank you for that.
The largest multi-class hydro foiling festival in North America with boats and boards. The waterfront is covered, two epicenters, plus a race village for public engagement.
We all of a sudden have found ourselves in the middle of Foiling Week Pensacola, the North American Foiling Championship. And we are just so excited about it.
This event, I think, is so important for us to communicate across the GYA, invite them all to come here.
I think just gathering the foiling community together in one spot just helps the whole promotional aspect.
We're here actually for Foiling Week and a bunch of teammates here, so trying to give back as well to the next generation.
Forces with Foiling Week has made it possible for Foiling Week personnel to come and be able to talk to some of our outreach partners, like the 70 kids that we just had here, to learn about foiling and sailing and the gift that they have here in the Pensacola Bay. It's a partnership that I think can live on for a long time.
I tell you, just from watching these foiling boats, the speeds are pretty impressive. And I know you guys do even get a little bit airborne. I think if you go too much faster, you might actually get fully airborne.
Be it with American Magic or be it with Foiling Week, what's happening is just a natural progression.
Man, I had a blast. It was really fun. We did a whole new flat water format for us.
In a sense, it's like dynamic meditation.
Thank you. I think it was worth watching every cup of what we did last year. And let me go to, there's one document I want to show quickly. Okay, just, can you see?
Yeah, zoom out.
Okay, I just wanted to map who we are and what we do. In the world of sailing, the Global Sailing Federation is called World Sailing. So it's the International Federation of the Sport, which is of course connected with the IOC, which is the International Olympic Committee. Within the, within World Sailing, there's basically several categories that give, let's say, a different ranking of value to the events that happen around the world. The main and the most important, of course, is the Olympics, which is connected again to the IOC. The funding of the majority of the federations come from the International Olympic Committee. So most of the federation, they focus on the Olympic sport. And that is true also for sailing. Olympic is the most important event of sailing. Then there is a second layer just below the Olympics, which are the World Sailing Special Events, which are the commercial events, the events that organize, some of them organize series, some of them organize specific events, but it's like, if you wish, similar to the tennis Grand Slam. Instead of having Wimbledon, Roland Garo, and the US Open, you have this list of events. The most important one, and probably the most famous, is certainly the Americas Cup. Then we have the Ocean Race, which is an event that goes around the globe, racing in the oceans. We have CGP, which is a series of events on foiling boats. The World Match Race Tour, which is an event where they race with two boats against each other, very similar to what the Americas Cup is. There is the Star Sailor League, which is an event that takes nations into one design boat, all identical. And then on boats, we have both and boards, there's Foiling Week. Foiling Week is the only event that has boats, boats, and boards. And it's the only event of all of them that also has dinghies, so small boats. And as you see from the type of events that are there, it is quite a restricted club. To be together with the Americas Cup and CGP is, let's say, unique. And the value of these events and their media capacity to be in the news, to be in the newspapers, to be on the TVs, and all of these is of course magnified by the fact that they are special events. World Sailing itself promotes everything that we do. And then there are basically all the classes and the normal racing that happens. So whether it's with keelboats, or dinghies, or boards of different types, basically they are another layer, let's say, down from these kind of events. I just wanted to show you one more thing, which is another uniqueness of Foiling Week is the fact that we have, we are the only multi-class event of all of those. So we combine all different foiling classes into one event. These are some of the classes that come most of the times sailing with us. So we have the moth, the wasp, let's say, without mentioning all of them, but let's say, I would say, there is no foiling class that has not raced in a foiling week. They've all been there. And from the very beginning, we, I would say, from in every event that we have done, we always had the moths. The moths are the boats that, let's say, the best sailors in the world sail. All the American Magic sailors and most of the Americas Cup sailors, they sail on a moth. And they've been, let's say, racing with Foiling Week since 2014, both in Pensacola and in Lake Garda this year. Wasp, again, it was born basically Foiling Week as a class. It was launched the very first time at Foiling Week in Garda in 2016, and they have raced with us ever since. That is true for the majority of these classes.
I think something else to say here is also that they operate as solo entities as well. So they have, sometimes they have their own series that travel around the world. You've got the GC32 class that used to be part of the Extreme Sailing Series that you might have heard about. But they're all governed independently. And what our goal is, is to wrap as many of those classes and as many of those sailors together under one banner for as much exposure as possible. And that's what we've been doing in Italy, and that's what we had a first crack at in Pensacola last year, sorry, this year. But like Luca said, around the moth in particular, they, if you are top 10, 20 in the moth class, you will probably be helming an Americas Cup boat. So it's the talent ID selection pathway for top helmsmen. And then you have other, other classes there that are cutting edge. And it's foiling, right now, is the cutting edge of sailing. It's bled into the Olympic Games. But also behind all of these classes is a huge industry. So composite technologies, of sailmakers, of not just sailors, but boat builders. And that's also where the foiling organization, so we have Foiling Week, which is our major event, and then we have the foiling organization, which is like a trade body for the industry.
Globally.
And that's not just sailors, that's not just classes, that is innovation, that is boat building, it's economic development, it's also commercial craft used for transport, so not just sailboats, but Artemis.
For example, among the members, we have San Lorenzo, which is the group that owns Blue Game, which is the company that built the chase boat for American Magic. And they also own Swan, which is the company that is working with American Magic to produce some boats locally in Pensacola. And they are members of the foiling organization.
I think, I think also for a bit of context is that we also stand here with slightly different hats on. So my background is professional sport, so I've worked for World Sailing. I was the Commercial Director of World Sailing, I ran all their partnerships, and I also ran all of the special events. So the, for sailing, it is a niche sport. It is not the NFL, it's not tennis, it is niche. So the understanding from the public needs to be top of our priority. So we need to educate all the time, but also we need to come together. And we need to work together to promote a sport that is fantastic. And I think for context with Luca and I, we did not know where Pensacola was. And the, and the phone call that we got from Sail Pensacola got us here. And we knew instantly that your body of water is extraordinary. But the reason why it's extraordinary is because you have a combination of flat water in the bay, you have a sound, you have a barrier island beach, and then you have the sea. And not many cities in the world have that combination. And it means that you have a natural, you have a natural asset that we see as really key to being utilized and is something that you can't pay for. So we, we will go to with our events in the US, typically Newport, Rhode Island, Miami, San Diego, San Francisco. They are the key hubs, and then Chicago is also thrown in there. And you will see the majority of special events or high-profile sailing events in those locations. And what we see unique about Pensacola is you have all the natural attributes and also you, your price point is far lower than all of those cities that I've just mentioned. So if we want to train here, you, you can train here for a month instead of the price that it will cost you for a week in LA, as an example. So Long Beach, where now Europe and where foiling is probably the biggest in Europe, are now turning their heads towards LA as the Olympics come. So they're looking for training venues, and that is where we also turned our head to look to the US. But yeah, that's a bit of context. I think what, what we want to do is also, we don't know many of you, and we, we want to give the opportunity to you to ask about foiling, ask about us, who we are. We've got different accents, but we're, we're up for explaining anything, anything that you want to. We wanted to make an impact in our first year, and we invested our time and we wanted to make it a success. We had barriers and we had negatives, but we also believe that we had a lot of very positive takeaways from Pensacola.
Well, I think the, yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is of all the classes that you've seen there, next year we will not have one of the classes within Foiling Week. We will not have the wasp because the class has already organized with, directly with the yacht club. And therefore, our numbers, expectation is lower, and our ask is lower. And I just wanted to state that then, therefore, we expect to have, instead of 450 people next year, we expect to have around 300, 320, which is anyway 60% more than what we had on year one. On year one, our forecast was 180, and we got 181. So normally our forecasting is good. The ask is reduced to 375, which is an increase of 15% versus an increase in people of 60%. But it's a decrease from the original ask of 500,000.
The number that you're talking about, the number, you're talking about the number of participants?
Yes, it's, when we say participants, is the core, let's say, the core of the system. Well, if you organize a race, the first point is how many people is coming to that race. Not necessarily a large number means a big event. Take the Americas Cup, they have six boats with eight people, it's 48 people. Is that a big event? Well, yes, it's the biggest of all of them. Because then the public that comes and the teams and everything make it a large event. So it's not only certainly the only KPI that we have. Because of course then we have the coaches, the staff, the visitors, and the general public that come to see the event. And then of course, it's the, the reason why you do these events. You bring public to see them, not only you bring sailors. And I think one, one thing that we've been very efficient in doing is that we brought a very, very international demographic to the city. People coming from all over the world, not only as participants to race, but also the coaches and the general public. Not only in the racing side, but we also organized an industry forum where we brought 50 people from the top industries around the world, just to name one. Persico, which is a company that manufactures, let's say, carbon fiber racing yachts. One of them is Runa Rosa, for example. Sent a boat to do what is called commissioning, which is basically, let's say, completing the boat before the launch to American Magic here in Pensacola, because the client is American. And we brought the company that make it to this industry meeting in Pensacola. And we brought all the people also from the US that are involved into the industry of foiling to visit American Magic as a facility. And we have signed a memorandum of understanding of cooperation with Florida West to keep bringing industry. Because again, we have two heads, and they work in sync. You do events to bring the industry, you grow the events, you grow the industry, and the two keep working well together by maximizing the system.
I think also to add to that, you have a unique position now in the US in that it's hard to sell boats that are built outside the US. In fact, it's impossible. So now a lot of the industries that have been pretty dormant and focused on Europe are turning their heads to the US and looking for homes. And I think we have Foiling Week, but Foiling Week is like an advertising board for an industry that follows and supports. And these boats evolve. And so in 2014, when Foiling Week was in its infancy, those boats look very, very different to what they are now. And that's only a, you know, a short amount of time. But also, they are innovating all the time. And the composites and the technologies and the people that are involved, the sailors are becoming smarter because they have to be smart to build these boats and, and to, to work with them. But it's, it's a combination, and I think the way in which we see it is the industry is the cake and Foiling Week is the icing. And we use Foiling Week as an advertising board for, for a growing industry.
An accelerator, it's an accelerator. And again, talking to Florida West, it's one of the, they, they have, let's say, four industry pillars in Pensacola, and two of them are maritime and aerospace. The combination of these two by coincidence is basically foiling, because you are building boats that fly. And they, you use the very same technology. You use the composites to build these boats, but you also use avionics to make them fly. They have control flights aboard all of these boats. American Magic has computers that run some of the system, and they are avionics. Used into the maritime field, but they are avionics, that's what they are. So bringing an industry that is the peak of technology will of course shine an even bigger light to a city, a county, and a region that is interested in showing what can do to the globe.
There's also some questions that were raised because we couldn't be here for your last meeting. And I don't know whether you would like to ask them again, or if you'd like for me to explain anything in particular. I think there was particularly one around how we calculated room nights, and very happy to explain that. We've also just recently received the Economic Impact Report from Visit Pensacola and their third-party agency. So I'm more than happy to ask, answer any questions.
So I know there are some questions among the council members, but if you would go ahead and address the room nights question, since we know that that was definitely one.
So it's split into two. So when we reported, we basically had 15 days after our event to then submit to the TDC, because the turnaround time was fairly quick. But we have the top set of numbers, which are the core numbers. So they're the ones that we absolutely control. We know exactly where our people are, and also where our sailors are, where our VIPs are. So we can, we can say, right, these are the number of rooms, and these are the people that were there. So if we look at, can you guys see that? Okay, yeah, sorry. So for, for staff as an example, or for competitors, let's take competitors. So competitors, we had 181 competitors during the course of the event. We hosted three or four training camps pre-competition, and then also many of them stayed on later to do mini ad hoc training camps as well. So if you took that number, which is 1921, that means that the competitors stayed for around 10 days. 10, 10 to 11 days on average, with some of them staying for longer and then some of them staying for a shorter amount of time. The same goes for staff. So we knew exactly where all our staff were staying, and that is a multiplier of the staff nights. The next one is an iteration, it is a multiplier, and it is not a science. So the way in which we calculated that was for, for our race villages and then for our various little activation areas, we had a counter where we counted the number of people that walked in and out of the various areas. And then we had surveys, and we surveyed around 150 a day. And then from that, we extrapolated the figures that you have there. But they are not, they are not actuals, they, they are a multiplier of the surveys that we took. So what, what we had is we had a breakdown of the number of locals versus the number of one-night stays, two-night stays, or two nights plus stays. And that was across the various locations in the race village.
And I think what is interesting, basically, so the 10,000 total means 1,000 people for 10 days practically. The way Visit Pensacola calculates, they also do surveys and iteration. They don't have perfect data, they don't have every hotel telling them exactly who is in what. So they have a similar scope. Their final number was 2,900 rooms. So they calculate rooms instead of room nights. But rooms with the majority of the people staying as two or three people. If you multiply 2,800 by two or three, you are not far from the 10,000. It may be 8,000, 8,000, maybe we were optimistic, but we were not far off. We just used a different way to calculate, and we had only two weeks to do that, while Visit Pensacola report came six months after. So they had a lot more time.
American Magic has computers that run some of the system and they are avionics. Used into the maritime field, but they are avionics, that's where they are. So bringing an industry that is the peak of technology will of course shine an even bigger light to a city, a county and a region that is interested in showing what can do to the globe.
There's also some questions that were raised because we couldn't be here for your last meeting. And I don't know whether you would like to ask them again or if you'd like for me to explain anything in particular. I think there was particularly one around how we calculated room nights. And very happy to explain that. We've also just recently received the economic impact report from Visit Pensacola and their third-party agency. So I'm more than happy to, to ask, answer any questions.
So I, I know there are some questions among the, the council members, but if you would go ahead and address the, the room nights question, since we know that that was definitely one.
So it's split into two. So when we reported, we basically had fifteen days after our event to then submit to the TDC, because the turnaround time was fairly quick. But we have the top set of numbers, which are the core numbers. So they're the ones that we absolutely control. We know exactly where our people are and also where our sailors are, where our VIPs are. So we can, we can say, right, these are the number of rooms and these are the people that were there. So if we look at, can you guys see that? Okay, yeah, sorry. So for, for staff as an example, or for competitors, let's take competitors. So competitors, we had a hundred and eighty-one competitors during the course of the event. We hosted three or four training camps pre-competition. And then also, many of them stayed on later to do mini ad hoc training camps as well. So if you took that number, which is one-nine-two-one, that means that the competitors stayed for around ten days. Ten, ten to eleven days on average, with some of them staying for longer and then some of them staying for a shorter amount of time. The same goes for staff. So we knew exactly where all our staff were staying and that is a multiplier of the, the staff nights. The next one is an iteration, it is a multiplier and it is not a science. So the way in which we calculated that was for, for our race villages and then for our various little activation areas, we had a counter where we counted the number of people that walked in and out of the various areas. And then we had surveys and we surveyed around a hundred and fifty a day. And then from that, we extrapolated the figures that you have there. But they are not, they are not actuals. They, they are a multiplier of the, the surveys that we took. So what, what we had is we had a breakdown of the number of locals versus the number of one night stays, two night stays, or two nights plus stays. And that was across the various locations in the race village.
And I think what is interesting, basically, so the ten thousand total means a thousand people for ten days practically. The way Visit Pensacola calculates, they also do surveys and iteration. They don't have perfect data, they don't have every hotel telling them exactly who is in what. So they have a similar scope. Their final number was two thousand nine hundred?
Yeah.
Rooms, so they calculate rooms instead of room nights. But rooms with the majority of the people staying as a two or a three people. If you multiply two thousand eight hundred by two or three, you are not far from the ten thousand. It may be eight thousand, eight thousand, maybe we were optimistic, but we were not far off. We just used a different way to calculate and we had only two weeks to do that. While Visit Pensacola report came six months after. So they had a lot more time to go into the data. But they are near in terms of significance.
But they're not NFL numbers, that's not what we're trying to show here. We're, we're just trying to show a broad brush of what we gathered.
Okay, thank you. So we do have some questions, Councilman Baer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just want to clear something up. You, I think you mentioned that WASP is not going to be here this coming year, is that what you said?
No, I didn't say it's not going to be here, it's not going to be part of Foiling Week.
Not going to be part of Foiling Week?
Yes.
Did you say you also reduced your ask to three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes, we reduced our ask to three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Where is that? I didn't see. Okay, okay, that's not in our, anything we have, so that's, that's news to us.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I do have some questions. So were you aware of the budget hearing that we did? That we were going to talk about your budget, the one we did prior to this? Were you aware, were you made aware of that?
So we, we joined your first initial meeting and we were here online, ready to talk to it.
Okay.
But you guys, I think, had so much come in and were not ready to review.
Okay.
So then we stepped back and then we entered into Foiling Week. So Foiling Week Malchesny was then, I think, your second, our second day was when you did the report. So we couldn't fly out. And so what, what we then did is we flew out to see David and request another option, whether it's virtual or, or any, any option to basically address you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we had our originally scheduled workshop back in May, they, they were online, prepared. We ended up canceling, if you recall, because we didn't have enough time to review the fourteen hundred pages or whatever.
Right.
So we rescheduled that and that was right when they had started Foiling Week. So they could not attend our second, our, the second scheduled hearing. So they reached out to me and asked, could they have an opportunity? Because they'd like to do it again and get our support. So met with them and scheduled this meeting.
Okay, all right, I'll continue then. So it looks to me like you didn't have a lot of spectators that were outside the local area. I mean, it looked like the majority of the people, you know, only forty percent of the spectators you have were outside the local area. So that's concerning to me from a tourism perspective. Do you have plans to try and increase that? I know it's not really a spectator sport as much it is a participant sport, but do you have plans to increase that?
Yeah, so, yes, basically. I think anytime we go to a new location in a new area that hasn't either been sailed or spectators go there to watch sailing, you are a standing start. And so when, when we initially had Pensacola highlighted as somewhere that we believed in, we then went back and you have to engage classes, you have to engage the community, the industry. But also, we actually only got told that we could go ahead in October. So the timeframe for us to activate Europe or Australia or New Zealand is very, very difficult to do in that period of time. Generally, when we plan events, we are planning a year and a half out, probably two years out. And also, we align it with Olympic calendar, we align it with the America's Cup, with SailGP, because a lot of those sailors are sailing in multiple different events, multiple different classes, trying to earn money wherever they can. So if we dump a Foiling Week on top of a SailGP event or an America's Cup, that will impact dramatically what we have. I think what we've also seen is that in our previous events, you have a compound factor that has, continues to increase as it becomes more aware that you're going to be there year on year. And also, if we have more time to plan, we're going to get more classes. We're going to get more opportunity to attract world championships, Olympic sailors, like the, the pinnacle of our sport. But we can't just say, come along, you know, it, it doesn't work like that. And we need to have a strategy and a structure that allows time. And then also, instead of us just putting our reputations out there and saying, trust us, come to this new place and it's going to be great, we're going to put on all these events outside of just the sailing, which is a main focus of Foiling Week. So we had the internet, the Film Festival, which is the first time that we've had it outside of, of Europe. We also had parties and we utilized various different communities, so PBYC, PYC, the Hilton, so.
Satori Foundation, the Surf, Autism for Surfing or something like that?
Yep, Special Olympics.
Special Olympics.
So we, we were, we were trying to engage with as many parts of the community as, as possible. But also, the, the guys that are coming to watch this, a lot of them are international. A lot of them are Europeans. And, and from a local perspective, it is brand new. So it's, it's something new that they see. And, you know, one of our efforts, we're trying to get the boats as close to the shore as possible. But also, we were put into Mardi Gras.
Oops.
So we, we're coming at this, I've never been to a Mardi Gras before, I had no idea what it is. Now I do, and I really enjoyed it, by the way, so, but.
We had, we had a clue into the Mardi Gras at the end.
And, and what we tried to do is then work with Mardi Gras to see if we could do any cross collaboration. But I, I think, you know, if we were not on top of Mardi Gras, we'd have had a bigger opportunity. Saying that, we used Mardi Gras as a promotional tool to induce the sailors to come across. Have you ever been to Mardi Gras, come to, come to see Mardi Gras? It, it happens to be on the same weekend as Foiling Week.
Right, it did put a strain on the city, for sure, having both events at the same time.
Well, we, the dates that we picked were suggested by Visit Pensacola and we only learned of the overlap in January. We suddenly had a call saying, oh, there's Mardi Gras. And we just, we didn't even know what it was. And we say, actually, we, we went, yeah, good, without knowing that it would stop the city. But let's say, in terms of resources, we only had, as far as I remember, one police car dedicated to Maritime Park that we paid for.
Right.
Which was requested as part of the permit, to get the permit at Maritime Park. We needed to have a police car, but only one, so.
So, and, and I think if we didn't have the police car, we would have broken our permit. So I, I remember you, you asking in your, in your previous, in one of the previous meetings. It's sort of a catch twenty-two there. You're, you're stuck between providing exactly what the city require for a major event like ours and then also doing everything we can for that license.
Right. Since you mentioned the city, I, I have a question, jump ahead on this one. So you list twenty thousand dollars in financial support from the city for, under Sail Pensacola, I guess, from the, the current year. And then you're saying that fifty thousand is coming from the city for the next year? What is that, what does that compose down?
That was value in kind.
Okay, so in kind.
Yeah, so they, they provided a lot of the infrastructure, especially around Maritime Park. They gave us access to meeting rooms, they gave us, uh, beach, walked us through all of the licensing requirements. And we needed that to start with because we don't know the city.
Okay.
And also, they, um, some of, some of the stuff that we had down at the beach was also unique for the licensing and the requirements there.
Okay. In your application, I'll just jump to that because I'll make some comments later, but just, I want to focus on questions because I know it's where we are. On the fifth page, it states, this event will generate direct benefits in the form of tourist visitation for the nine days and nights of the event. Can you tell me how you define a tourist?
Say again?
A tourist. So it said, your, your document says, this event will generate direct benefits in the form of tourist visitation for the nine days and nights of the event. I just want to know, is a tourist, is that someone who's here to compete? Is it someone who's here just to watch? How would you, because you're saying that this will, it's kind of a direct benefit of tourist visitation.
I, I think all of the above. Anyone that comes to Pensacola for Foiling Week or to watch Foiling Week and they don't live here is who we would require, well, we would, we would say is a tourist.
Okay. On the page nine, it says, under your goals and metrics, you only have, you only have two metrics, which I've done these proposals before, I usually have three, there's like three boxes there, I always have three. I, I don't know if it's a rule, maybe you can get away with only having two. But the only two you have in there are number of competitors and hotel stays. And I'm just wondering why there's not a metric for spectators? You know, it's just, you, you have two competitors and hotel stays and it just seems natural that if you want to attract people, tourists, that you'd have something for spectators. Why did you not do that?
I, I think we're, we're almost saying that hotel stays.
Are equivalent to tourists.
Yeah, if you have an increase in hotel stays, then you can assume that there's an increase in tourism.
Maybe, okay. And under your program goals, you list the number of national continental competitive sailing events as six, with two special events including Foiling Week and GWA. I just want to know, what are the other four events and what is GWA?
If we go back.
GWA is the Global Wing Foiling Association. So you know the guys that, that have the wings out here and are foiling on a board?
I really don't.
Okay. Well, it was one of our classes, so it, it fits into that structure that we showed at the start, which was world sailing and then it sort of cascades down.
Okay.
GWA is, is like what kite surfing was ten years ago.
Okay.
So it's brand new, it will probably be an Olympic class. It is one of the fastest growing classes in the world because the barriers to entry are far lower. So you don't need to spend a hundred grand on a, on a boat, a carbon fiber boat. You can get up and running for five, six grand.
Okay.
So it means that we start to become more of a mass participation sport rather than elitist or, you know, where, where you're seeing more barriers.
And so what are the four events that you're talking about? Because I think you did two in the current, but.
It's not that we, we did two, is that the definition is they are called special events.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's a single event, but we had, for the first time in history, actually, right? We had for the first time, two special events cooperating into one event. That is very uncommon. Normally, you don't see the America's Cup and CGP in the same place at the same time. This is the first time that ever two special events have been in the same place, running an event.
Okay.
An event for us is the combination of everything, not just one class. Because we are made, we are made of the combination.
Okay, so there's Foiling Week, there's the GWA and there's four others. That's, I'm just asking, what are those four other special events?
Say again?
What are the four other special events that you're saying that you want to have for twenty twenty-six? Besides those two, Foiling Week and GWA?
I don't think we said we want to add other special events.
It just, it says in your program goals that you want to do six events with two special events.
Events are not special events.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it means.
Special events is a defined term.
Okay, well, what are the four other events that are not special? The unspecial events?
All of the other classes, so it's the other classes that will come.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then.
Like the moths as an example, will be an event.
The moths, okay.
So especially if any of these class run a national or a continental or a world championship, that's a higher degree of event.
Gotcha.
And we normally combine them within what we do.
And how many did you do the current year? How many events did you have the current year?
We had two Foiling Weeks this year, one in La Guarda and the one in Pensacola.
Okay, but I'm talking about for the purposes of this, what you did here, so.
We had nineteen classes competing.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and then, just to clear up, the number of competitors you're shooting for this year, in your application, it said three hundred plus on your program goals, but in the metrics, it said four hundred to four fifty. Where are we now, three hundred, back to three hundred?
Three hundred, no, let's say four fifty, it's like four fifty is the ideal word. Let's get to four fifty and three hundred is what we think is the.
Okay.
The minimum achievement we would consider as success.
In, in Malchesny, we are five hundred.
Okay, now let's get to money, all right. Page eleven, you project no increase in contributions, donations from private sources, remains at three hundred and eighty thousand. Why is, why is that? You're not seeking additional or?
We, we are, it, it, it's, um, we have to be realistic. We are going to a venue that if we bring partners and sponsors, we needed to have a baseline to show what is possible. So an example, Mount Gay Rum, as an example, is a partner that we've had in many, many events. And we spoke to them four or five times to try and get them here for this year. And they were like, it's not, that's not for us and it's the first time there. So you guys go and do it and then come back to us with what you've managed to achieve. And now we can go back and try and hit higher metrics, especially on sponsorship revenue as an example.
Okay, but, but while you, and I know we've now adjusted this to three seventy-five from the five hundred, but it looked like a disproportionate share. You were asking for a lot more money from the county without showing any additional effort in some of these other things. So let me, like the thirty thousand for other income, which we figured out was sponsorships, VIP hospitality packages, grants and referral fees. You're not projecting any increase in that either. So thirty thousand, you're just going to stay at that? I, I just would expect that if you're going to grow the event, that you'd have more than thirty thousand in those four categories?
Yeah, so I'm just getting to the number so I can see them in front of me.
Sorry, can you just tell us which page is?
It's on page eleven of your application.
What is the number of the page?
Oh, you just passed it, I think.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, oh, go back.
Eleven, I'll just make it smaller.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, go up a little.
Yeah, sorry, trying to.
I want to just touch the screen and move it.
We're trying.
Okay, so the three eighty stayed the same, the thirty, thirty thousand stayed the same. You know, so I was just trying to figure out why you didn't project more there if you're going to grow the event.
I, I think it's us being realistic.
Okay.
And, and I think that with, with the timeframes that we have here, so with October being when we get told, right, go or don't go.
Right.
We have to be realistic in the amount of income that we can expect from sponsors. So that, that is, is basically that. If we project, we can put in six hundred thousand if we want to, but we, we have to be realistic and truthful to ourselves because otherwise, we're shooting for the sky and it's, it's just not something that we can do.
Well, I, I just have to say, we have to be realistic as well. And when you give us this, with what we have in front of us, not what you've told us today, the three seventy-five, seventy-three percent of your increase would come from the county. So that's what we're looking at. And I don't know, you had a deficit last year, I think, maybe that's to make up some of that. But, you know, when we look at that, we don't see additional effort on your part to increase sponsorships and things like that, but you just want more from the county. That doesn't make me feel good. You know, I feel like if you're going to ask for that much more from the county, there needs to be some goal to increase the amount you get from sponsorships and private sources, that's what I'm saying.
And in light of time, we have fifteen, this meeting was scheduled between three and four and it's three forty-five. So if we can hear from other council members with questions. Anyone else have questions? Tish?
You mentioned Miami, have you guys done an event like this in Miami before or Chicago?
Yes.
Yeah, and we've done San Diego as well. So just for North America as an example, yeah, we ran the Extreme Sailing Series in San Diego, two years in a row.
Is that the same type of thing like this or is it different from this?
Yeah, so one of the classes that you saw on that board was the GC thirty-twos. And then we also had Foiling Kiteboards there. So we activated in San Diego Bay, Coronado Bay and then also Mission Bay.
And are those events like this where it's a nine or ten day event?
Yes, so we would be, that is a seven day event with three days of training and then the rest is the competition.
How long, how long ago was those events?
Pre-COVID, it was two thousand and seventeen, eighteen.
Yep.
And why, do you still do those events or do you not do those anymore?
No, so what happened, the, the Extreme Sailing Series, which was, um, it is comparable to what is now seen as SailGP. So it's fleet racing on hydrofoil and catamarans. So what happened is the Extreme Sailing Series stopped and then SailGP took off after the America's Cup. So it was an evolution of racing.
Okay. Did you get funding from like the tourist development councils in those areas?
We, yes, we did. So TMD, which is Tourism Marketing District, funded us as well as the port. So the port of San Diego, I think, gave two, uh, one-third and then the TMD gave two-thirds.
Okay, and then, how many room nights did you guys have at the Host Hotel?
At which?
The whole, here, here.
In San Diego?
No, here in Pensacola. I think you, the Host Hotel was the Hilton on the beach?
Um, we haven't got the breakdown exactly, we could. Um, we haven't got the breakdown exactly, we could find that out, but we, we.
From Visit.
We know where our staff were.
Where was your staff at?
Portofino or Hilton.
And then how many rooms did you have at Portofino and how many did you have at Hilton?
I, I'd have to look that up for you.
Okay.
I, I know exactly how many rooms we had, but I don't know how many room nights we had. And we've got the.
Do you know how many, how many of yours, out of the number you guys put on the application, how many were volunteers?
Around, uh.
Go down, we've, we've got the date, the numbers there.
I think it's also in the presentation here.
So from staff that came from Europe, we had around thirty-five. And they were, and that is our team, that's our professional team. And then we had around ten volunteers that came into our staff. And that were, they were at the Hilton as well and also Portofino. And then we had local volunteers that would not have taken room nights that came from the various communities.
Sixty, we had sixty domestic, and domestic in the sense of local volunteers, sixty.
Sixteen volunteers?
Six zero, sixty.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the rest, you said thirty-five were staff members, that's who you housed?
That we brought from overseas, yes.
Okay, and then, so they all stayed ten nights, is that what you're saying?
Longer, longer because of the setup.
Okay, and then you said Visit Pensacola, said you had two thousand nine hundred room nights, but you're saying that because two or three people stayed in each room, that it's closer to the ten thousand?
No, it's, it's, we're not saying because of two, three people, it's a different metric. Normally events, when they report to tourism authorities, use the people per, sorry, the person per, uh, number of nights. So the number of people for the number of nights, because we don't have access to the hotel matrix. We don't know how many rooms were booked. We cannot ask the hotels how many rooms were booked because of privacy and because they don't give us that kind of information. The only information we can have as an event is how many people come, for how long. And that's why we multiply these two together. And we say, okay, if we have a thousand people that come for ten days, that's equal to ten thousand. Visit Pensacola has access to different kind of data and they have, they can, they, they also do some inference. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to cut you off, but in terms of time, I don't understand what you're saying. So is it two thousand nine hundred room nights is what Visit Pensacola said? Darren, can you help us with this? Cause there, you're saying two thousand, he said two, Visit Pensacola said two thousand nine hundred room nights. Now he's saying because there's two or three people in a room, it's closer to ten thou- that doesn't make any sense to me. Room nights are room nights.
Yeah, they reported their numbers based on taking the number of people, times the number of days, and they counted a room night. That individual stayed ten nights, so they counted ten room nights. Where we take the number of people, but well, if three people stay in a hotel room or five people stay in a vacation rental, we still count that as just one room night, not five people in a house as five room nights. So that's the difference between the numbers.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, and while you're up here, could, could you explain to me why, did you guys, did Visit Pensacola suggest having Foiling Week during Mardi Gras?
No, that, that, that's not true. So we did not, we actually recommended not doing Foiling Week during Mardi Gras. We talked with Tim Reichon when dates were being chosen. We thought it would have been important for Foiling Week to be, to stand on its own and not necessarily be confused with the traffic generated by Mardi Gras, plus the overlaps in the location with the downtown and Maritime Park. There was a number of reasons why we recommended actually not being on the same dates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, how that translated from Tim to Foiling Week to Sail Pensacola, that I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I talked to Danny with the Mardi Gras and he also was, said there was very little communication and it was a, you know, so that's why I was wondering why Danny said one thing and now I heard something different. So that's, that's why I asked, thank you.
But for sure, we want to avoid a clash in the future.
Right. Look, could I ask you, so if you do not get funding, would you still have this event?
No.
Okay, so this event solely focuses on the county?
It's like, it's a commercial event of the type of the world sailing special events. These events do not happen because it is like a volunteer-based system. Like, let's say classes, they need to run their own events. I've been president for seven years of the moth class globally, okay? And we simply need to run a world championship every year, end of the story, whether we get money or we don't get the money. It's the sport. If you're sailing, it's like if you're running or if you're golfing, every year you need to do that, full stop. Commercial events, they exist because they get funds. America's Cup, that doesn't, if the America's Cup wouldn't get fund from Italy and Naples, no way they would go there. It's not, uh, CGP would not go to, to San Francisco or to New York if it didn't get the funds from the locations. It's just how they, these events behave. If we, they don't move if.
I think, I think to take, take that on as well, I think we need to diversify our revenue streams from you. And I think that we have, um, we have USPs that don't just target tourism, you know? But the way in which we were bought here through Sail Pensacola was through the TDC. So I think there's, you know, there's other parties and players within Pensacola that could support this event. It's just time. It's, it's targeting those other pockets of, of funds to, to get us to the level that we know that if we get a certain level of funding, whether it's commercial or institutional, then we know that we can press go.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I did.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I'm curious, so the travel expense that's taken in here is to bring your, all your volunteers and your employees?
Uh, which, which travel expense, sorry?
Um, it had hundred seventy-five thousand, something, hold on. Hundred twenty-four thousand for travel expenses, one twenty-two this year.
Yes, that's for staff. That's for staff and some VIPs, so for the, the industry people to come as well.
I'm kind of curious, how are the industry people paid? How are you guys paid?
In this instance, we weren't. So we, we saw Pensacola as a way to start an entirely new market. And so we're investing into creating an event that will grow, but we're not gonna see return until three or four years, once it's secured in the calendar and sailors know that they can come. But, um, sorry, the, who, who gets paid? Our staff get paid. So we have a team that.
And that's not out of here? That's from somewhere else?
Yeah, that, it's not part, it's not the funds from the, the TMD, uh, the TDC. Sorry, I'm getting confused with San Diego. Um, it's, uh, yeah, a different pocket. So we use professionals to run our events. So our PRO, as an example, um, our race officer, who runs all of the racing, is a professional. So we will pay him to fly in to, to do that. And as part of special event status, you need to have a certain caliber of people to, to run your events.
And for, for example, the, the race officer that was with us at Foiling Week, and that is that every Foiling Week will be, is consulting world sailing for the Los Angeles twenty twenty-eight Olympics program. So that's the caliber that we need to have, and of course, they are expensive.
In. Your intention moving forward, the, I mean, the large expense here, I guess the event expenses, the event expenses has the cost of bringing those people in, is that where that is?
So event expenses is more around logistics and, and also the branding and the infrastructure that we need to run the events. So, and also, we, we had quite a strain because in Melchesney, so in, in Garda, we have one location. Everyone is in the same location and everyone is, is going from that one hub. Whereas here, we've utilized multiple different locations because of the classes are requiring different things.
Where were all the locations? Cause I didn't recognize everything on the video, I was curious about that.
Yeah, so we had two race courses, one in front of Maritime Park and one a bit further to the southwest. So that, they were our primary two race courses, which we moved around, and that was for the boats. So the dinghies that you saw. Then we also had on Pensacola Beach, a complete setup for pump foiling. And then in Maritime Park itself, we activated that Little Marina where they could do courses for E, E foilers and also pump foiling. And then we had, um, what's the place by the beach?
Uh, near rapid, um.
Rapid, uh, clear water? Quiet water, sorry, quiet water. So inside the sound.
Okay.
And the idea is also, of course, events and sailing are used to propo- to promote shoreline. So the more we are spread out in a location, in a city like Pensacola, the more we can show the beach, the city, and all of its beauties to the rest of the world. If you only stay in one location, then it's limited what you can show. But it costs more, of course. Thank you. You're welcome.
Jason, any questions?
Um, under your budget for twenty twenty-six, there's a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar line item for human resources. What is that for?
Team, it's our professional team, yeah.
Okay, um, and then to answer your question, it was a hundred and seven nights at the host hotel. Yep. Um, and then if we go back to how the hotel nights are calculated, so for twenty twenty-six, you're expecting three hundred and fifty-ish competitors? And then you're expecting them to stay nine nights apiece-ish?
Some of them more, but yeah, it's a good, a good stab.
Okay, and then are you expecting additional folks to come in and to support that? That aren't families, cause I'm assuming families would probably stay together?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, we are. Not a dramatic uplift, you know, and, and the, the reason being is again, we haven't been able to announce this until this meeting. And I think with, with what we see in our other events, if, if we have time to, in advance of the, the dates, we're gonna get a bigger uplift of third-party visitors. So not the core team, not the technicians, not the sailors themselves, but these, these extras.
Okay, and then Darren, I guess this question's for you, cause I have no idea how you guys calculate hotel rooms. Would a, a good calculation be taking the three hundred and fifty, multiplying that out by the nine, coming up with three thousand five hundred nights? Or how would you recommend that we forecast that?
So we use our research agency down in Saint Germain. They survey all of our events, they survey throughout the county, throughout the year to get that in-person data and information. They ask about size of the party and length of stay during these events. So, uh, when we do events, they rely on information that the event organizer provides, right? So the number of registration, their staff, which, uh, we did wait on for a little while for that to come through, but when we got that information, then down in Saint Germain ran those numbers. As far as, uh, and so they, they use an algorithm for that. And, and again, there is, uh, you know, feedback from the organizers that if the athletes are staying with family versus staying together in a house, um, you know, they try to, the best they can, take that information to come up with that number.
So do we have a anticipated number of nights for twenty twenty-six from Visit Pensacola?
I haven't seen that information, so no, we, we haven't run anything through down in Saint Germain.
And, and do you have anything from your firm for twenty twenty-five that's not based on everyone staying in different rooms? Cause I think that's where the confusion came in earlier.
Yeah, I mean, and this is how we report for, for all events. We are accounting rooms or vacation rentals versus, um, people per night.
Right, so rooms, not bodies?
Yes, rooms, not bodies.
And what did your number come up with for twenty twenty-five?
That was the number, I think it's in the report, it's what, twenty-nine hundred? Room nights, it's in the report that we provided.
Okay, which is a lot different than ten thousand. Okay, so that makes sense.
What is your average? When you're showing twenty-nine hundred room nights, what are you showing as the average occupancy of each room?
That I'd have to refer back to the report if they.
Probably three?
Party size, I think was, off the top of my head, yeah, there's either two point three or three point two.
If it's three point two, you multiply that by twenty-nine hundred, you'd probably come up with something near ten thousand.
You're getting closer to it, that's right. Yeah, yeah, cause you're talking about, let's say, three thousand times three, that's nine thousand people.
And then our, our pot of money is replenished on the nights, not the bodies. Okay, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
But the economic impact is per person? What the person is spending, not necessarily the party? And when you're calculating or collecting information, you can collect the actual number of the audience, but you don't know how many people are staying in a room at the exact same time. And you also, you have to make, as Darren said, when they're doing the visitor interface surveys, they are gathering the information from the person that they interviewed and they're asking them, how many members in your party? And if you're staying in the same room? And then they take the, that number and they aggregate that and then multiply it by the total audience to get an estimate. So there's never a precise, uh, there's, there's no real science to it. I mean, I guess there's math to it, but there's, there's no exact number. So you're, you're getting an estimate of an overall, um, event that somebody gave you a number like, Mardi Gras Pensacola gave us a number of a hundred ninety-one thousand people went to Mardi Gras Pensacola. I don't know where they all were, but they're telling us ten thousand came to their event and that seems like a reasonable number. Some of those are staff, some of those are other visitors that came for the event.
And I think an interesting number from the report from Visit is that the economic return is four point three times the invested money. And for year one.
Which is pretty good for a first event.
For year one, I think it's pretty good.
We projected one million and we got one point three.
Three five here, yeah.
David, I would like to say ten thousand people, but for our purposes, it's room nights. They're reporting ten thousand room nights, we clearly did not have ten thousand room nights.
We are not arguing with how Visit calculates. We use just a different metric and we are happy with the numbers.
Right.
They calculate just.
Right, right, but for our purposes, it's room nights.
So twenty-nine hundred room nights.
We have no objection to that calculation.
Me as, me specifically as a bed tax collector, I'm looking at room nights. And ten thousand room nights versus two thousand nine hundred room nights is a, is a big difference. Especially when other people come up here for grants, just our last meeting, and we question other events that come and how many room nights they create. So for this purpose of this council, it's, it's so focused, I feel like should be on room nights. I know they said four hundred and seventy-eight for their staff, but I just saw there was a hundred and seven. So the, the, they're, they're using the number of people and not the actual room nights. So to me, specifically for me, the run number of room nights makes a big difference.
We had to report something to you in a very short time period and we didn't know what Visit Pensacola's methodology was for that.
And in all due respect, the TDC is made up of industry members and interested industry members. And so some of us, at least half of us, are not bed tax collectors. And so we care about the overall economic impact of tourism to our market, not just the bed tax impact. That is a very good, uh, uh, variable in the calculation because obviously without that bed tax, we can't continue to invest in the tourism. That's the money we're using. But it's not the only metric that we're required to measure and use.
And I'm not saying that, I'm saying my specific metric, for me as a bed tax collector, falls on that, that's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, I thought I understood you to say.
No, I'm not talking about your business, David, I'm talking about bed tax collection. And for me, as a bed tax collector, it makes sense to fund events that are going to return bed tax dollars to this community. And that's the only way the engine keeps rolling. That's all I'm saying.
Well. He's gotta get that in every meeting. All right, all right, yes, ma'am.
I just have one question.
And we're running out of time, so we need to.
Okay, real quickly here, the rentals and leases, your seventy thousand, seven hundred eighty-two for rentals and leases, what were those for?
Sorry, can you say that again?
In your expenses?
Yeah.
You have a line item for rentals and leases?
Yeah.
What were the rentals and leases?
So some of it was for speedboats and, and also banners and fences. So infrastructure, marquees, porta potties and toilets, um. So infrastructure, marquees, porta-potties and toilets. Um, yeah, it is basically infrastructure.
I guess I thought that was under the event expenses. So I was wondering the difference.
Sorry. Let's go to it.
It's page 13.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So on that page, you have, um, the rentals and leases. On the next page, you have the bulk of it, the almost, the 543,900 expected for event expenses.
Yeah. So a lot of, a lot of it is, it's not exact and we've divided it up into various zones as well. So some of it, we will fall under physical infrastructure. So marquees, as an example, we set up three marquees. One in PYC, uh, sorry, four marquees, two in the Race Village in Maritime Park, and then one on the beach.
Right.
Um, and they, they would all fall under infrastructure costs.
I, I guess the question I'm really asking is, is there, does this event for the workers that you bring in, the employees that you bring in, do you pay for them out of this event for them to stay in hotels and, um-
We, we don't pay, not out of this fund. We, we have to pay for it.
Right.
A lot of those funds, we are pulling from our other events. So to basically subsidize, to, to launch something, to catalyst, to catalyst for it. So, and then also some of the salaries are proportioned. So some of these guys are full-time with us, but we can't attribute a full-time cost just to this event unless, um, like some, some of them only worked on this event specifically. So we would proportion that out.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Councilman Bear, do you have some final questions?
Just, so then let's figure this out. The employees, you don't have any paid from this amount, from your budget for this event? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, unless they are directly related to marketing and promotion. So our head of comms, as an example, has a portion of her expense attributed to, um, the TDC funds. But within this budget, overall budget, we're, we're pulling in all different types of costs that, that are attributed to the Pensacola event itself.
Okay. Cause page 16 of your application says there are no employees. But your August 1st letter to us, you mentioned there were 40 individuals, including a mix of paid professionals, part-time contractors and volunteers. Um, so that's why I was asking that. Is any of, are any salaries paid from this? Cause you say you have no employees. That's what you're saying in the application to us?
Yeah. They are contractors. So that, but they're paid on an annual basis. So it's, there is, under Italian law and British law, they are paid for a year and then it's, it's continuous from that.
Okay.
So they're not, I guess it's a definition. It's that they are not PAYE, which is how we would class a, an employed person, a legally employed person in the UK. And that's 35 of them.
Okay. So you have no employees?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll just make a couple of comments and I'll be done. I know I run short on time. Probably should've scheduled more time for this meeting, but, uh, the, um, I feel like you're promoting a sport here. And it was kind of what we, what was mentioned. There's, this is a promotional event really to kind of build other things, economic development wise, you know, perhaps we get to a point where we bring someone in who's building something. You know, kind of like what American Magic is going to do. So I think this is kind of like one aspect to, to bring people in. I don't really see it as a tourism event. I, I just, I have an issue with that. Um, I think it's an economic development, you know, item. The county commission can do whatever they want. We're just going to recommend. Um, I'm a little frustrated that we were told today that your ASK dropped to 375 because we've gotten nothing about that. So I don't know if your other numbers dropped. I don't know if your amount of effort for sponsorships or any of that dropped. I just don't know because we just found out that today. I just don't know that all this media, that I know there's a lot of media that's generated from this, whether that's really improving tourism in Pensacola. I don't know that for sure. Um, I'm interested to see what happens when you have this, it's not party Mardi Gras, because I think there's probably some bleed over between the two. You even mentioned your statistics, the number of people that were exposed to what you did. It was like 50,000 or something because of Mardi Gras. So I think when you stand alone away from Mardi Gras, we'll see the true numbers. Um, I just have an issue with the fact, I don't think this is necessarily tourism money. I think what it could lead to would be a really good thing for us if we could build on what American Magic has done. Um, I know that the mayor, I've talked to him and about the GL, about them getting money as well. And I don't think they've asked us for anything yet, but I, I just don't see this as a tourism expenditure really. Um, so that's where I am. Thanks.
Thank you. I think to, to, if I can comment, I think where we see it as a tourism impact is because we are creating a hub for sailing. So it's almost like adventure tourism and trying to put on the map, using professional sailors and high-performance sailors, a place that people could come regularly to train, compete. And, you know, we, we have a network of teams that we could say, just come to Pensacola. This is the infrastructure that you need to lean on. These, these are the ways in which you can enjoy Pensacola, that you could go to Seville's that we utilized, we could go down to the beach, et cetera. So it's trying to highlight a new location within the state for sailing. And that's where we see it as a, as a tourism, uh, play.
All right. Any other final comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, at this time. Oh, Mr. Hall, come on down.
Good afternoon, council members. Uh, definitely a robust discussion regarding this proposed allocation. But I did also want to bring to council's attention, um, this is a new organization. It is not Sail Pensacola. It's part of our process. Financials are supposed to be provided. I have requested that information. I have not received it. So if council does make an allocation, I would still propose contingent upon providing financials. Uh, that could be a PNL. That could be a check register. Could be a copy of your checking account, uh, where transactions are happening. That is something that must be provided. Obviously there are no tax returns because they are brand new. There is no audited financial statements because again, they are brand new. So again, we had to have something to check that box. Uh, currently I do not have it. So I did just want to make that last statement to council.
When did you-
Good thanks.
Uh, multiple times. I could go through my emails and pull that out, but- No, no, it's been weeks.
Thank you.
Scott? I can address that. So we, for us to open up a checking account, we needed to set up a 501(c)(3). We set that up and then for us to open it, we went to the bank today to start that process. And we've not had the need for a bank account at all in the US. So we were using our UK and our Italian bank accounts to run the event last time. Now, if we are the direct, um, ask, asker, I don't know what you would call this applicant, thank you, um, for this money, we're, we're going to put in place, uh, a, a checking account. And we went to Regions today. We met with the bankers. We gave over all our IDs, our visas and everything to, to do that process. But we can't do it from Europe. We have to be here in person to open up that account. Um, and for, for us to open up that account, Luca and I both needed to be there at the same time. So you need two people and it's also, um, they, they needed all of the 501(c)(3) registrations. So it's not that we're trying to stop interest into our bank accounts. It's the, the physical nature of this. We needed to set up a bank account.
Okay. And you'll provide that as soon as you get it?
With pleasure. Yes.
All right. Uh, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion, if there is such. Well, I've asked if anybody else had any comments. Are you talking about from the audience? Is there anyone here from the audience who wish to speak to this item? Please introduce yourself.
Yes. Chris Polte, CEO for Florida West. Uh, we signed an MOU with the foiling organization last year. There are four tenants to our work plan, uh, that being aerospace, marine, maritime, life science and cyber. Uh, this is a critical thing for us. And the way we view it is, one, it does create tourism throughout the year because of the interest in, in showcasing Pensacola as a sailing facility, but it also puts us on the map. It's basically bringing a smaller version of the Paris Air Show to Pensacola. So we're bringing clients to us. So it's one of the few tourism-related events that we feel supports this community in a nu- just numerous ways. And so allows us to build a stronger, more diverse economy. So, you know, we, we do feel that that's a, it's a, while it's still a tourism event, it benefits in many, many ways.
Thank you. Anyone else here from the public who'd like to speak? Darren?
I would be remiss not to comment, um, you know, on the comment, uh, that Councilmember Bear had, had said, this is a tourism, tourism event. It does generate room nights. I attended the opening reception that was held by the Pensacola Beach Yacht Club. I sat at a table with someone from Texas, Miami, um, and someone from Canada. I was on a boat out on the water. I was with someone from Madagascar, someone from Australia. It is, it pulled in, uh, the visitors from, from outside of the, out of the county, out of the United States. And I will just say the gentleman from Texas stayed at the Pensacola Beach Camp, or, um-
RV Park.
RV Park. Thank you. Uh, so they specifically mentioned that. So I know that one group or team was staying, uh, using the RV park. Um, we had another person who was, thought it'd be great to stay halfway between Pensacola Beach and downtown. So they found a nice hotel in Gulf Breeze. I told them next time not to do that and, uh, pick. You know, the, I just looked at the report, 2,820 room nights that were generated. Those are real room nights that, that were created, that were spread out. I have a feeling based on, uh, just some of the reports we've heard back from lodging, that a fair amount of that probably was vacation rental versus straight hotel stays. And part of that is to do to the length of stay, that people were here anywhere from seven to 10 or, or longer. So that, that length of stay may be more conducive to a vacation rental type of experience. I've said this before, this group, Foiling Week, Luca and Scott do represent, uh, foiling at a very high level. Their, uh, involvement in the sport, uh, I don't think you can find a better organization that has the connections, um, with the world-class organizations. And so, uh, they can bring that level of recognition to Pensacola versus just running races. Uh, you can run races or you can run events and events being world-class events. So in addition to what Chris said about the economic impact, uh, that was an interesting and successful part of Foiling Week was bringing in these business leaders to meet in, in Pensacola. So I think there was a number of benefits. Um, again, we're always interested in room nights and, and generating TDT. So we definitely want to see that, that number grow. The 315,000 that was spent this last year, I believe was the largest amount given to a single event. So it is, it is a major investment. I'll say that. Thank you.
How, how many people were at the Pensacola Beach Yacht Club meeting?
Uh, that was early on. It was like after one of the first days. So they, uh, there's probably a hundred some, 125 people, maybe squeezed into that space.
Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak today? Hearing none, uh, at this point. If anyone would like to offer a motion, uh, we would entertain that. There's a request for 375,000. Well, I have the gavel and I can't make a motion, but I will pass the gavel to the, to our vice chairman.
Uh, at this time, we'd like to accept a motion.
Uh, I'd like to offer a motion to fund, uh, sailing, foiling, excuse me, foiling events, US Inc. For their requested $375,000.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I would like to, um, first say, I, I think this event was successful last year for a first-year event. I think when you're looking at the level of tourism, uh, local versus non-local, 40% is a very high number for non-locals. Uh, I think there was a comment from someone earlier that that's not very, that doesn't seem very successful. That is huge. 60% being local, uh, is still very successful because the data that Visit Pensacola collects and has collected for years shows that our number one driver for tourism is word of mouth. Most people know about our events and they know about, uh, our, our place and our assets because they heard it from someone who lives here. And so if 60% of those 10,000 people that participated, uh, or, or others that participated, have the ability to talk about how wonderful this event was, how wonderful it is to have it here in Pensacola because of the bay, because of the sound, because of the Gulf and the assets that we have. Uh, and to have two guys from another country here who are top of the class, uh, in this industry to be here saying, we want to host it here in your town. We think this is excellent place to be. Uh, I think we're lucky to have it. And so, uh, for that reason, I made this motion and I'm in support. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? Philip, like to call for the vote?
Matisse Patel.
No.
James Reeves.
No.
Ashley Hoffberger.
No.
Shirley Cronly.
Yes.
David Baer.
Yes.
Charles Baer.
No.
Jennifer Brer.
No.
Jason Nicholson.
No.
Motion failed two to six.
Thank you.
Oh, pass the gavel?
Thank you, Philip. Uh, thank you, Jason. Uh, so motion fails, uh, for lack of vote, uh, six to two. Uh, so with that, uh, that is the end of our agenda. Uh, is there any other closing remarks? Tish, any closing remarks? That's okay. Mr. Reeves? Ashley?
Yes, sir.
Charlie? Anyone? All right. With that, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.